Again, everyone, the time is 6:00 PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Lowson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Daniels.
So if we could just all take a moment of silence to honor and recognize the conflicts that we are experiencing globally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. All rise for the pledge, please.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mayor Williams, and she will share a presentation of the 2024 budget.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone. President Bowers, Council Vice President Asha Green, and members of Harrisburg City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present a brief overview of our 2024 City of Harrisburg General Fund Budget. The document you are seeing tonight is not a final project. Indeed, and instead, it is a blueprint, a starting point for how we will continue to move Harrisburg forward together into a safer, brighter future. The proposal you have in front of you is the product of months of stressful, hard work by the Office of City Controller Charlie Day Bruner, Business Administrator Dan Hartwick, Finance Director Marita Kelly, Budget Manager Tim Brooks, Accounting Manager Brian McCutcheon, and the dozens of people are their respective staffs. Work started on the budget this summer, and the last few weeks have consisted of long hours, difficult conversations, and even harder decisions to present a balanced budget before you. After tonight, we cede the floor to you. Over the next two weeks, you will review this proposal and be able to ask questions of our budget staff and department heads. I strongly feel this document presents the best path forward. My administrative staff and I look forward to working with you to have a budget completed for the residents of this city by December 31st. In the meantime, I want to highlight some areas which we are most proud and confident will set the tone for Harrisburg moving forward, and some of the areas which may cause some concerns. First, the most important part of this budget is this: There will be no tax increases, no layoffs, and no cuts in any services to the people of Harrisburg. Thanks to the work we did to eliminate the city's decades-long debt, our residents will not be left to pay for the decisions made by prior administrations. If we would have kept the status quo, debt payments would have been so high. We would have had no choice but to either propose tax hikes or cut services. Thankfully, we do not have to do either. In fact, not only do we have the highest staffing rates in over a decade, but our retention rates are through the roof. This shows that we have believed in four so long is working. We need to continue to invest in our employees if we want to make the city of Harrisburg a great place to work. In addition, we will be able to continue many of the programs and services our residents have grown to love. We will continue our investment to our Parks and Recreation Department, making it better than ever before. Events like the July Summer Music Series, the Bash at the Brownstone, Fishing Day at Italian Lake, and all of our summer programs, to name a few, are made possible by the continued investments we make in this budget. Also, our Department of Public Works is working harder than ever. The large-scale paving projects we saw throughout the late summer and early fall will only grow in 2024 as this budget will allow the city to continue with an expanded in-house paving program instead of contracting services out and renting equipment from others. Next year, we will see our American Rescue Plan Fund start to come to fruition. I have tasked Building and Housing Director Denise Hill with overseeing much of the first steps. Our priorities are the Affordable Housing Program and money for home repairs, especially for our seniors. And I'm excited to announce, we have just hired two program managers to oversee its progress. Once we get this budget passed across the finish line and we move in 2024, our priority will be to meet with council to figure out how we want our new South Harrisburg Pool to look like, as well as our ADA playgrounds. From a public safety standpoint, we continue to make investments in our police officers and firefighters. We will aim to hire at least ten new officers in 2024. It is ambitious but achievable number. Keeping in mind, last year, we bought in fourteen new officers and promoted another fourteen. The ability to grow within the ranks of one of Pennsylvania's proudest units is not lost on our recruits. In addition, our firefighters were entered the new year with a new contract. Four years with a 3.5% raise in this year alone. Their importance is not lost on us, excuse me. When someone is having the worst day of their life, be it a house fire or a vehicle crash, they are at their best in saving lives. The Harrisburg Bureau Fire has not lost a single life in a city fire in more than two years. We are forever indebted to them. This administration is elated that the city of Harrisburg has six major housing developments in progress. So Voight Towers, J&amp;B Gardens, Bethel Village, Sycamore Homes, Woodward Lofts, and TLC Cornerstone. Lastly, I want to address the challenging decisions we have already made and that now are presented to you. Whether it is the high staff retention rate, freshly paved roads, or just the general cost of services, a balanced budget comes at a cost. And if nothing else, I promise to always be transparent with you. We are proposing a $3.23 increase into our monthly trash bill, bringing it to $35.57 a month. Our rates have not changed in over a decade, and we have to ensure that this citywide service can operate in the current business world we live in today. This still remains drastically lower than our municipal neighbors, where places like Middle Paxton Township are charging $150 per quarter. Dairy Township is up $114 per quarter, and Lower Paxton is nearly $110 per quarter, compared to us, which would be $106.72 per quarter. Where taxpayers and neighboring communities are just getting trash and recycling, our residents get so much more out of our Department of Public Works for each dollar spent, like paving, park maintenance, snow removal, and anti-illegal dumping efforts. Again, charging in additional utility costs is not what I wanted to do. However, we feel this is the best business decision we can make with how hard inflation and rising costs have hit our bottom line. For a point of reference, it was just a decade ago where the city was paid for its recycling. Year after year, things changed, and now we are forced to pay $80 per ton to recycle. The future of rates and how we handle customers outside of the city is something we would invite the incoming Chair of Public Works Committee to take up with us. The Commonwealth's decision not to return workers to the office has caused the city millions of dollars in annual revenue with loss of business tax and parking revenue. Also, not to beat a dead horse, inflation has done real damage to many of our expense lines from fuel to insurance costs. Though from the looks of it, things are seeming to level off and stabilize. Councilmembers, we have the opportunity with this budget to continue to move the city of Harrisburg forward. This budget is fiscally sound and responsible. There are zero tax increases and continues to vest in the people who matter the most, the residents of the city of Harrisburg. I look forward to starting this important process with you after the budget meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mayor Williams. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda.
If I could just add one thing?
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Vice President Green?
I don't believe we were provided with a budget book?
Yes, they're coming down.
Okay, I'm like, that's a pretty important part for us to review. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes. Councilmembers, these would be the approval of the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November 14th, 2023. Are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear, I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of November 21st, 2023. On Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, the Administration Committee met to discuss two resolutions. Resolution 78 of 2023, which is a resolution confirming the appointment of Ms. Tirza J. Cameron Esquire to serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's Collection Matters, and Resolution 80 of 2023, which is a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Donald C. Steyer III Esquire to serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg for General Matters. Ms. Cameron was present on behalf of the Administration. Ms. Cameron introduced herself, sharing that she is a Lancaster native who attended law school in New York. She is licensed to practice in Pennsylvania and New York. Ms. Cameron has experience practicing law in the public sector where she served as a document review attorney in relation to the City of Harrisburg's litigation involving the incinerator. Ms. Cameron also has experience practicing in the areas of Social Security and Veterans Benefits. Ms. Cameron will serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's Collection Matters. Councilmembers asked the following questions. What sparked your interest in working for the city? Are you still going to operate your firm? What have you been actively involved in? Any potential conflicts of interest? What do you see similar in Harrisburg? What challenges would you face coming into this position? And finally, a question was asked of Solicitor Grover. What did he see in Ms. Cameron? Ms. Cameron's work on the incinerator litigation piqued her interest in working for the city. She will continue to work with the few veteran clients until their litigation is resolved. However, she is not accepting any new clients at this time. In response to the question, "What have you been actively involved in?", she noted that she has been involved in reviving the foreclosure registry, and really, anywhere that the city is owed money. She is seeking those funds and utility leads. She does not have any known potential conflicts of interest. In response to the question, "What do you see similar in Harrisburg?", she noted that she feels like the Bronx is most similar to Harrisburg. She likes that Harrisburg is heavily minority-populated and that government is heavily minority-populated as well. In response to the question, "What challenges would you face coming into this position?", Ms. Cameron noted that government is just a different animal. It's new to her, but she's up for the challenge. And finally, the question that was posed to Solicitor Grover, "What did he see in Ms. Cameron?", he noted that the undertaking and the response to the incinerator inspired him to court her to come work for the city. Mr. Steyer was also present on behalf of the Administration. He introduced himself. He attended law school in Seattle, and he was previously employed by Comcast for nearly ten years. He is licensed to practice law in Pennsylvania, and he has previously served as an Assistant Public Defender for the Lancaster County Public Defender's Office, and he will serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for General Matters. Councilmembers asked the following questions. As a public defender, what was your greatest accomplishment? What would general matters include? Any conflicts of interest? So, Mr. Steyer noted that his greatest accomplishment was just being there every day for his clients. He thinks public defenders often have... There's also, there's a thought, a fictitious rumor that people don't think public defenders are full attorneys. So he is here to combat that myth. And in relation to the question regarding general matters, it would really be all areas that the City of Harrisburg covers. Most recently, he began working on the Comcast Franchise Renewal Agreement, code violation, city island permits. He's also analyzing new law, new state law, that could impact the City of Harrisburg. He has no known conflicts of interest, and he's just looking for a wider range of work with the city. I would encourage my colleagues to support both Resolution 78 of 2023 and Resolution 80 of 2023. As we all know, the Law Bureau has been in dire need of some assistance, and I believe confidently that both Ms. Cameron and Mr. Steyer are more than capable of assisting as new Assistant City Solicitors for General Matters and Collection Matters within the City of Harrisburg. So this concludes the work of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Rodriguez on behalf of the Public Safety Committee on the work session that occurred on November 21st, 2023. Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. On 11/21 of 2023, the Public Safety Committee held the work session and discussed city business. This involved the quarterly report for the following departments: Codes, Health, Fire, and Police. We also discussed one bill that was recommended for today's legislative session. Commissioner Carter and Deputy Sworson joined us on behalf of the Harrisburg Police Department. The report stated that currently, the department's complement is 133, just twenty shy of being at full capacity. We sit at nineteen field manager roles with zero vacancies and seventeen ASME positions with only three open positions left. The Harrisburg Police Department completed bureau-wide training in response to active shooters in October. This took place in the Jackson Lake Complex in the early hours of the morning. There were ten officers in the field training program with an expected completion date of late November. This quarter, there were twenty officers assaulted under the law enforcement's officers killed or assaulted statistics. Patrol officers logged twenty, four hundred and three calls where Narcan was administered to each victim. Unfortunately, there were thirteen fatal drug overdose victims in the third quarter. My sincere condolences goes out to the families of those individuals. The Street Crime Unit seized twenty-one firearms, served thirty warrants, and made ninety-four arrests in the city of Harrisburg. Madam President asked the difference between the grants in the department to help clarify where we stand with the three different programs. Deputy Sworson disseminated the difference between the three grants. The GVI involves the project manager and teams going to homes offering alternatives to a life of crime. The GVIP grant involves spot shot or gun detection, ring doorbell supplements, and oversaturated work detail. And the local law enforcement grant entails license plate readers and the hiring of a mental health professional in the field. For more specifics from the quarterly report of the Harrisburg Police Department, please go to the city's website at www.harrisburgpa.gov. Following that, the Bureau of Fire Chief Enerline joined us to go over the quarterly reports for the Bureau of Fire. Chief Enerline stated that the training program is substantially growing. Two hundred and twenty-four programs, excuse me, were conducted totaling over 4,000 hours. The interactive and quality training is more effective for the department. Partnering with HAC will be beneficial for our EMS being trained to spec. Classes for lithium ion batteries just concluded that teaches how to confront and manage fires from lithium batteries. From the budget standpoint, overtime was very high. This was due to deployment for military assignments and injury slash medical leaves of absence. A $20,000 grant was submitted for a new apparatus with the department. Camp Curtain and Mount Pleasant also submitted the same amount, and those fundings will be used for improvements to the facilities. ARPA-funded radios have been ordered and some received. Two shipments came in, but these were majority batteries. The actual units will be here beginning to mid-'24. I am super happy to announce no fire-related deaths have been reported in 2023. My hats go off to the chief and the entire team, truly the best fire department in the nation. For more specifics from the quarterly report for the Harrisburg Fire Department, please go to the city's website at www.harrisburgpa.gov. For the Codes Department, Director Anne Montgomery joined us to go over the progress of the Department of Codes. The director stated 531 condemned properties on the current list. Demos in the third quarter were at six, four in-house, and two bidded out. We are currently assisting vendors in the Broad Street market to assist in any code-related manners. There were two vacant code officer positions, but they are now filled, and one management position has been opened due to some department shifting. The department looks to fill that void as soon as possible. The Hearing Code Board of Appeals is at full complement. This has not occurred in quite some time. Seventy stop works have been executed, twenty-seven block walks, and 328 officer complaints have been filed currently, and that was the brunt of the Codes quarterly report. For more specifics from the quarterly report for the Department of Codes, please go to the city website at www.harrisburgpa.gov. For the Bureau of Health, Director Wright joined us to discuss the department's quarterly reports. Director Wright stated, "We've applied for a mentorship program. This will allow a bigger health department to come in and share some of the best practices and strategies for our bureau." This Maintenance and Achievement Grant is being ironed out currently, and talks of collaboration with the local school districts are taking place to assist with that initiative. The Talks of an App was also mentioned as a tool for general information in the Health Bureau. Councilmembers suggested a universal-wide app may be more efficient for its purpose. Sixty inspections took place this quarter, but we will remain to be behind the national standard of the complement of that department. And for more specifics from the quarterly report for the Department of Health, please go to the city's website at www.harrisburgpa.gov. Bill 8 of 2023 was a bill that we discussed, and it was in ordinance amending Title 8 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Building and Housing Development Code to adopt and amend permanent fee schedules. Deputy of Codes Administrator Henry joined us to discuss this bill. The fees have not been adjusted in quite some time, so definitely overdue. We currently charge the same rate residentially as we do commercially, which is counterproductive. $8 per thousand would be the residential fee, and the new commercial fee will bring it up to $10 per thousand. The electrical rate would be reduced to $3 per thousand due to our rates being outdated. Uniform Construction Code allows us to extend the permit one time for six months, but we do not have the fee in our systems either, and that is currently. The bill was very cut and dry, and I highly recommend and encourage my colleagues to support this bill during tonight's legislative session. And that concludes the report from the Public Safety Committee's work session from 11/21 of 2023. Thank you, and I turn it back over to Madam President.
Thank you very much, Chair Rodriguez. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be shared by Chair Lawson, our Public Works Committee Chair.
Thank you, President... Thank you, President Bowers. On Tuesday, November 21, 2023, the Public Works Committee met to discuss Resolution 77-2023, a resolution for the approval of the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management. Mr. Shiedle from the VMC Fleet, the VMC Fleet Manager, requested the disposition of nine vehicles which are beyond repair. A 2013 Taurus Intercept, Police Interceptor, a 2021 Explorer Police Interceptor, a 2020 Explorer Police Interceptor, a 1998 Harley Davidson Motorcycle, a 2016 Explorer Police Interceptor, a 2008 Chevy Tahoe, a 2016 Explorer Police Interceptor, a 2017 Explorer Interceptor Utility, and a 2015 Explorer Utility Interceptor. We have recently previously disposed of fifty vehicles with a return of $172,495. Councilwoman Rawls asked where the vehicles would be sold, and the answer was GovDeals. She also verified that any funds received with the sale of the vehicles would be returned to the General Fund. Councilman Rodriguez verified that we have replacement vehicles identified for the vehicles we'll be selling. In conclusion, I would encourage my colleagues to vote to the affirmative for Resolution 77-2023. And that concludes the Public Works.
Thank you very much, Chair Lawson. We will now move to ordinances for first reading. We have three bills to read into the record. We'll begin with Bill 9 of 2023. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 9, 2023, in ordinance establishing the budget for the Municipal Government of the City of Harrisburg for the year 2024.
Thank you. Bill 9 of 2023 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, Bill 10 of 2023. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 10, 2023, in ordinance amending the Codified Ordances of the City of Harrisburg, Title 5, Licensing and Taxation, Part 5, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter 5 through 501, Property Tax by Establishing for the year 2024 a Tax Levy on Land and Improvements in Providing for the Distribution of Taxes Levied and Assessing Providing for a Tax Rebate for the Difference Between the Tax Due and Attributable to the Year 2024 Tax Levy over the Tax Due and Attributable to the Year 2006 Tax Levy for Qualified Senior Citizens.
Thank you. Bill 10 of 2023 will also move to the Budget and Finance Committee. The final bill for our first reading is Bill 11 of 2023. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 11, 2023, in ordinance amending the City of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the zoning designation of 208 Hummel Street from the residential medium-density zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to Chapter 7, 303 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Bill 11 of 2023 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. We have one ordinance for amendment. That's Bill 8 of 2023. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 8, 2023, in ordinance amending Title 8 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Building and Housing Development Code, to adopt amend permit fee schedules.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for final passage. That's Bill 8 of 2023. Could you please read it one more time?
Bill 8, 2023... Bill Eight, two thousand and twenty-three, in ordinance amending Title Eight of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Building and Housing Development Code to adopt amended permit fee schedules.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill Eight of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lowson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill Eight, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Seventy-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lowson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Seventy-seven, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Seventy-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming the appointment of Ms. Tersa Cameron Esquire to serve as the Assistant City Solicitor for the city of Harrisburg's collection matters.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lowson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Seventy-eight, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Eighty of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eighty, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Donald C. Steyer, the third Esquire to serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the city of Harrisburg for general matters.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Eighty of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lowson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Eighty, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to adopt an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Cumberland Dolphin Harrisburg Transit Authority, AKA Capital Area Transit Authority, to extend its term of existence for a period not to exceed fifty years from the date of approval of the amendment and to take all such other actions related thereto as required.
Thank you. Resolution Eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Eighty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eighty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving the disposal and destruction of certain technological devices owned by the city of Harrisburg which have exhausted its useful life for city operations or has nominal value, no value, or less value than the disposable cost.
Thank you. Resolution Eighty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will also move to the Administration Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yes, President Bowers, I do want a few announcements on some things that are going on in the city. Excuse me, I'm sorry. This weekend, we have our Winter Wonderland of two thousand and twenty-three. If you notice, it's decorated, well, you can't notice if you're online, but if you've been in the city building anytime this past week or so, you would see the beautiful Christmas decorations. There will be food, toys, and crafts and holiday photos. This will be this Saturday, December second, from ten a.m. to two p.m. in the MLK Building right here at ten North Second Street. So please come out and join us. It's gonna be very, it's gonna be a lot of fun. There's some other things going on really quickly. They're a little later on in the month, but you could write a letter to Santa and bring it to the MLK Building. And then you can pick up a toy as well when you bring the letter. That's on December second, also from ten to two, so that's probably the same event. There is going to be, Parks and Recreation is sponsoring a drive-in movie, Home Alone, one of the classics. That is going to be on Saturday, December ninth, and that's gonna be at a Hundred Concert Drive at six p.m. So please join the city in these wonderful events that we are sponsoring having, and there's many more to come, and I hope to see you all there. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. Councilman Rodriguez, did you have a new business note?
Yep, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to make note that tomorrow, November twenty-ninth, the city of Harrisburg's parent task force will be provided and begin. It's an outlet for Harrisburg parents and city leaders to meet and discuss what is happening in their neighborhoods, their blocks, and their homes in a safe, closed environment. Conversations will be respectful, and any disrespect of other views or concerns will not be tolerated. The goal is to foster a sense of community, to get to heart of the family issues, and work together to prevent violence in the city we all love. The first meeting will take place Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, right here at City Council Chambers. And then successive meetings will take place every second Wednesday of the month, beginning January tenth. Once again, that's a collaboration between the Harrisburg School District, the Administration, and City Council. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. I would just like to note for the record that it looks like the budget books have been delivered, so all council members will receive a copy before the end of, I guess, as the meeting ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Lastly, the mayor just informed me that parking will be available out front of the MLK building during Saturday's event.
Oh, great, thank you. Councilmen Majors?
I guess just one question for our Budget and Finance Chair. Do we have a meeting schedule to alert the public about for our meetings? And then to, I guess maybe for the Administration and for us, the availability of the budget online.
All right. Yes, we do have a meeting schedule. Budget hearings will start next week. So next Tuesday and Wednesday, we will have budget hearings at five-thirty here in the council chambers. The following week, we will have budget hearings Tuesday and Wednesday here in the council chamber. So that will be December fifth and sixth, starting at five-thirty, and then December twelfth and thirteenth at five-thirty here in the council chambers. I would ask all council members to have their initial questions to the city clerk by this Friday. If you would need to get some in after that, you're still able to get questions in. But if we can get the initial questions in so that we can get them to our department heads and the administration so that they can start getting those answers gathered. Thank you.
Councilman Majors, just for the record, we will get the budget up on the website ASAP.
And lastly, there should be an announcement of what the date of intended vote is under the Optional Third Class City Code.
The date of intended vote would be December nineteenth at our legislative session.
Thank you, everyone, for the updates and for clarifying. I just have two notes of new business, and then we can adjourn if there's nothing else. I just wanted to note in terms of scheduling, we will host, Harrisburg City Council will host a work session on Monday, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five-thirty p.m. in council chambers, of course. And then one community event. Please mark your calendars. On Thursday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven-thirty p.m. the Kirk Smallwood Basketball Court dedication ceremony will occur at the Evangeline L. Kimber Gymnasium located at twenty-four fifty-one Market Street. So it's exciting that we designated November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Kirk Smallwood Day in the city of Harrisburg, so nearly, a little over one year later. The basketball court is being dedicated in his honor, so that's exciting. It's always nice to be able to give people their flowers while they can still smell them. The time is six forty-one p.m.
Madam Chair, may I just interrupt you for one moment on a housekeeping matter?
Okay.
As the mayor announced tonight, there's proposed rate increase for trash rates. Because of that, we have to bring you a separate ordinance to amend the code. And with that in mind, we most likely will need at least a special legislative session before one of the budget hearings. Just introduce it. Once we have the information of where exactly the changes are going. They'll be minor in terms of the size of the ordinance, but it's required. If you're gonna be voting on a budget that hasn't changed, there has to be an ordinance that'll go with it to put it in place.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying. Vice President Green and I can decide where that special legislative session may best fit prior to the hearings. Thank you. The time is still six forty-one p.m. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.